Seventeen councillors attended the meeting, supported by the town clerk and her deputy, and the council's chaplain. The main section of the meeting was devoted to discussions and ratifications of the minutes of the various committees. But first, it was the turn of the general public to make their voice heard. This evening, there was just one voice.
We have one member of the public who wishes to address us this evening. We are waiting for him to have five minutes. The gentleman's name is Mr Jarrod Small. It was the 49th day of our meeting. So, the floor is yours, five minutes.
Mr Chairman, members of the council. In August, a party who spoke at the council meeting in March wrote to you advising you of our intentions to call a public meeting with a view to establishing a Friends of Herbert Gardens group, which could address issues relating to Herbert Gardens at a more local, less exhausted level than the town council. Our feelings were that local knowledge and experience were important to making the gardens a space that all members of the community could happily use. The meeting took place at the community centre on 11th of September, and following extensive local leafleting, 36 people turned up. After some forthright but constructive discussion, the Friends of Herbert Gardens was established with the following aims. One, to preserve Herbert Gardens as a park to be enjoyed by all sections of the community. Two, to promote harmony between different interest groups using Herbert Gardens. Three, to promote development in Herbert Gardens in keeping with their traditional character. Four, to coordinate any necessary maintenance beyond that provided by Clevedon Town Council and its contractors. And five, in pursuit of the above aims, to liaise with the Clevedon Town Council, the North Somerset dog warden, Avon and Somerset Police, and other relevant bodies as necessary. A committee of seven people, a good mix of local residents, parents and dog walkers, was elected to move ideas that had been raised at the meeting forward. And it was also agreed that a further two places should be offered to nominees from the Civic Society and the Herbert Gardens Tennis Club. Even if these bodies prefer a more passive involvement, we will keep them advised of our activities. The committee has held its first meeting, and the members displayed a like-minded attitude to the future of the gardens. Twenty-three people have signed up to the group with payments of £5 ahead. There is an option for pensioners and the unwaived to make a donation of a pound minimum, though all of the pensioner members so far have chosen to contribute £5. The issues which brought Herbert Gardens to the forefront of the town council's attention are, we believe, being addressed successfully as they occur, and we hope our ability constantly to monitor this situation will minimise any problems. Certainly, having the cachet of representing the Friends provides some authority to our efforts. We hope to prepare some of the ideas through the Town Council's Property and Environment Committee, especially in areas where expense would suggest that £105 funding might usefully be squeezed from the balance of Western Supermayr. However, there are other activities that we feel able to engage in without assistance. A leaf clearing morning has been earmarked, and we are also hopeful of organising a carol concert in the gardens, making positive use of the famous acoustics. We would hope to see similar socially inclusive activities take place during 2015. We are aware that earlier initiatives to create a Friends of Herberts group have come to nothing, but we believe we have the impetus and are seeing the enthusiasm to make the thing work this time. We would hope for your support for our activities where appropriate in the future, and we will be forwarding a copy of the minutes of our meetings to the chairman of the Property and Environment Committee as a matter of routine. Thank you.
Thank you. No, Mr Chairman. I have only a couple of brief questions that you can ask us this morning.
Thank you, Chair. It's just how encouraging this is. I know you've done a great deal in the past, but it's lovely to see that you're now formally constituted, and lots of luck for the future.
On the 8th of October, a resident from Hill Road reported to the Environment and Property Committee that they witnessed a dogfight between two staffy bull terriers, one on a lead, one off a lead. How are you going to police this?
Can I ask?
Yeah, of course you can.
Both the parties have been spoken to, and in fact, the fight started between the two owners, not the dog.
Oh! I must say, better.
Before the serious business got underway, councillor Linda Nott had news for her colleagues about an award given to the gardening group of Clevedon Pride.
We managed to win silver. I entered it, actually, telling everybody, really. It didn't cost anything, and I dragged this gentleman around town, looking at all sorts of things. And what particularly impressed was, we went to look at Semple Field Lot, and Ray kindly showed him round, and he was ecstatic about it. We love the bees and the treacleing, and it was a gorgeous hot summer's day. And then we went to the Sheepfield Abbey Glebe, which had been completely restored by volunteers, one of which uses people with special needs. And that was all sorts of ticks and banny points, because it isn't just a question of pretty flowers, it is a question of community involvement. So, the community involvement part gave us lots of, lots of points. I didn't get round to the Millennium Auction, which I'm on next time, because he looked a bit tired, actually. What he did like, as well, was what we'd done as a town council, the flowers along the seafront and the wishing well, which were looking gorgeous, all the puppies and the lights and the blue. He liked that colour scheme, he obviously loved pretty things. I took him down to the square, unfortunately, it was market day. I left him at Red House, really, and I think he was getting a bit tired. So, all the work we'd done in the pond seemed to go over his head, although that's real garden, it isn't just pretty flowers. And then I dragged him through Alexander Gardens, and he loved the roses and the lavender, but unfortunately, North Somerset had cleared the middle wall completely, and it was empty. So, I was a bit shocked about that. And then we went up to Hill Road, why, which I'm used to too tired to care, I think. Next year, unless I give up completely, I'll probably be interested properly, which involves actually putting some money in, so I'll probably be coming back to you with a begging bowl. So, there we are, silver.
The Transport and Highways Committee had been perusing a government discussion paper requesting the views of local authorities on the right to challenge parking policies.
Just to recap, it's a discussion paper, it's to do with, we can challenge positions to do with provision of parking, use to do yellow lines, and also any parking strategies. And there was a link there to the consultation document, if anyone's had a chance to have a look at that, whether we have got any views on it. I think we're slightly out of time, if I'm correct, if I'm, we're supposed to submit a proposal, although this meeting is happening now. I mean, I personally am very positive that we can, as a local authority, as a plan, anybody challenge anything that is to do with parking, which is a hot topic in this town particularly, but other towns. In terms of this meeting, I don't know if you've commented, but if anyone's had a chance to look at anything at all.
Any questions or comments?
Has the Transport and Highways Committee actually formulated any responses to this?
At the meeting on the 3rd of September, it was related, as I remember, because it was by four council.
Right, so still to go forward?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Can we have acceptance of part one of these? For the other page? Thank you. Number two.
Right, going back. 14th of April, 5/6, I wonder if Herr Prater at Rees had responded to our invitation to come and speak to us, that is the confusing car parking charges on the seafront.
I think Councillor Nott has been speaking to me about this.
Well, I haven't yet. I invented a bill, which has actually got even worse. Having complained about the ambiguity on the signs and the fact that people don't understand you can either pay for one hour or four hours, so if you want to go for a walk, it would take two or three hours, it was unclear. So, people were putting in £2, as I've shown you before, and it's invalid. Since I complained, not Herr Prater himself, because he seems to be unavailable, but to some other person, they put another little sign, which actually says, "You may not stay for two or three hours." Rest my case. So, it's added to it, and it hasn't changed over from summer to winter season. I don't think we need summer in winter season, because people walk along the prom all the year round. So, yeah, it's just one of those jobs, I haven't actually met him, I don't know, I don't do, yet.
Well, I think the action is still sound, we asked Herr Prater to come and meet us at the seafront, and we've had a chance here.
And then we've done it within four hours.
And he can pay for whatever he wants.
Yeah.
Certainly, it's a lot to move, you know, all the way.
Yes, these are minutes from the meeting on 14th of September. As you can see, Part One items are the time relating to the staffing subcommittee and recommendations from it. I was considering taking board on the block, but I think perhaps the table, one or other, unless members have any other suggestions, we'll see how we get through. These were all discussed at the various meetings and our recommendations from them. Fifth item is recommendations regarding council hours, this was discussed.
Are that the top one?
Yeah. This was discussed at considerable length, the idea here being that it provides staff with some quiet time within the allotted hours, and it was considered as a proposal, having looked at the typical sort of days and public visits and so on and so forth. Have any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Councillor. As you know, at the meeting, I did query the actual hours that were being recommended, indeed the reduction thereof. I did feel that to shut the office between the hours of nine and ten was perhaps a little unfortunate. I think it's a time, perhaps, when members of the public, if people are on the way to work, maybe they're going to school, or on school, or whatever, might just call in, and it did seem to me that it might have been better, if we are going to shorten the hours, to take off the one till two, rather than after two to ten, that was one thing. The other is, I do wonder what the real justification is. I understand there's not a large number of people coming to the office, and I do wonder whether or not, this tends to have a wrong signal to be repeated, that we're sort of not open for business, if the hours we've always had, it's always been five hours, as I've been on this council, I think it was five hours, for time in the morning. And I think, I do wonder whether this reduction is really necessary, and I'd like some further justification.
Well, Chair, as the councillor did discuss in the subcommittee, I think really there are three things. I think, first of all, we quite rightly challenge ourselves with practices that have always existed versus modern means of communication, other things. And I think it's fair to say that substantial amounts of communication that would previously be done on the door or through people visiting is now by email, phone, so on. Secondly, that first hour is the critical time to see what's come through on email, or a phone message, and so on and so forth. And thirdly, that actually lunchtime, which we did consider, is the time, if any, and I don't mean that flipantly, but I mean it's not, there's not a constant flow of people in at any given time, but if there is any sort of difference in flow, then it tends to be lunchtime when people are available. So, I think those were the main reasons that we concluded that this was a sensible situation, aligned, of course, Chair, to the previous item regarding toil, where in some cases, we're, as in, we're planning to keep the door open, when in fact, we could be doing more work in the office, and therefore thereby avoiding additional toil. So, putting it all together, taking on board the council's arguments as well, that seems to be the sensible compromise.
Yes, could you tell me, the increase in the number of emails, which I understand is the modern player, have you noted the lesser number of upper physical corners?
I have not actually done a survey. I can only tell you that on what we've experienced, we have noticed that there is a great majority increase in emails and email communications from members of the public. Visitors, it will depend on the time of year. At the moment, yes, we've got visitors coming in, they're right centre, but they're paying their wrong amount. Most of those are actually coming in mid-morning to lunchtime. But other times of year, we have seen a reduction at times, and other times, it depends as well. If there is an issue on the agenda that everybody wants to come in and complain about, like North Somerset forgetting to pick up the bins, then we do get to know, they do come in.
I'm not going to lie to you, Mr Chairman, but I have a suggestion in the moment. I think it's a pity that the office is not available to the public when there is someone in there. We have three office staff, so we have one on the reception desk, and it creates a wrong impression when people come to the door and knock, they see people working inside, and they can't get to them. I think that creates a problem. So, I would suggest that if you implement this, if we put a notice at the entrance to the car park, that tells people when the office is open. There's a very tiny little notice now, opening in the window, which is a job to see if you're not looking for it, and think, then the public wouldn't go to the office, they wouldn't see people working, they would have no problem. But we are supposedly available to the public as and when they want to see us. So, I think that perhaps if they don't get as far as the office and see people working, it will help our public image.
Chair, can I just answer that and say, I think that's a very good point taken on board, and also mindful of the fact that councillor Shropshire has suggested on a number of previous occasions that we reduce the number of staff, so I think we need to be mindful of all these sort of suggestions in the mix, and bear in mind that, you know, we have also had councillors' suggestions at times that we sort of over nine to five, which will clearly involve significant additional planning. So, I think what we've proposed and taken on board is probably to have a notice on the front, it would be very good.
Just going to clarify, it's my understanding we don't have three members of staff on duty every day, but there are some part-time members of staff, so we don't have three. My second point is to do with emails, email correspondence, which I, as I said, we're probably getting more of that than anything else. I'm just wondering what the office policy, might be too strong a word, do you intend to get back to people who respond, so who come across my email wise, or twenty-four hour, forty hour? What's the average time you can get back to people in, members of the public, email? We try, we try at least to acknowledge the email within twelve hours, or a further weekend, when we're first giving them an email. We will respond back to them, depending on their question, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. It will depend on the question, some questions you do need to go off on, fine, but we will at least acknowledge to them that we've had their email and what action we will take if required. See, that sounds absolutely fantastic. If people know their email being received, then that at least makes them feel that they're being listened to, like saying the phone call is, or a face-to-face meeting, because I suspect the people that come into the office, they can't expect an instant response from you guys, they need probably to ask another question, make some more phone calls. So, it's almost the same thing, but for me, that the email is getting the same treatment as a face-to-face stroke, a phone inquiry, then I would be happy to be able to reduce the term of ten to two.
Very good. Well, as I said, Chair, actually, it's sort of been since I've been sick that followed, because we've also talked about being much more clear on websites and platforms and contact vehicles and things like that, so there is a logical follow-through in these proposals.
I'm just going to support the recommendation. I'm meeting here in a number of mornings, and I know how busy it is, so to have that first hour where you can really put things together every day, answer emails, do all of those things, it's going to be very valuable.
Chair, I'm in, pleasure, Chair. Sorry, you can.
I've got a minute approval.
Yes.
Do we have a minute, Chair? Yeah, I've got my minute approval. Well, there's your data. Thank you, David.
In the minutes of the Town Events and Amenities Committee, the North Somerset Council's Green Spaces Officer, Gareth Withers, was quoted as saying that the railings along the seafront would be painted by a community payback team. Councillor Geldart required clarification.
The seafront railings, we talked about the repainting of the railings, and keeping the safe of love to the little heart, to be undertaken by a community payback team, because now, we've talked about community payback teams off and on, you know, the last two, three years, and they've always been by the Supreme's appointment, because they haven't turned up or anything happened. I'd like some sort of clarification, are all these teams actually things we can request on? Can we actually ask them to do stuff? There's lots of things in this town that need attention, that we haven't got the budget for, or we haven't got the manpower for, or we haven't got the time for, all of the above, and I just want to know, I'm not expecting someone to say, "Actually, I noticed that the railings have been repainted in the last, well, two weeks." I just want a sort of, I don't know, clarification on some of the insurance, can we use the payback? Because I've got lots of ideas that they can perhaps help us with in the town, but every time you try and engage with them, it never happens, for whatever reason. So, I don't know if this should be our, what's the word, our sort of giving people, if that actually happens, but in the past, when we talk about them, they've been very normal, you can't get them organised. So, if anybody gives any information at this stage.
I believe, Chair, that initially, there was a dear thought into the planning and the type of work and skills that had been involved, and I think no more than that, probably. But I believe that, in answer the second part of the question, North Somerset would welcome approaches for things that the team can do, and I can't remember whether it is through the woodworking team, or who it is managing it, but I know they're being differently managed now, and I think better, and I think it's been more productive. The last time I spoke to Gareth about it, he seemed a bit more enthusiastic about it than he'd been able to be before. So, I would suggest that he is approached with any ideas and see, I mean, like everything, it's probably a first come, first served in terms of budget availability.
Mr Chairman, we've used these teams before, I seem to remember using them on the lot plans, on one occasion, some years back.
And Herbert Gardens, too.
Not feeling good at the meeting, I was interested to know that this Withers reported on the ban stand, saying that all works would be completed by the end of this week. I know I'm getting old again, but I seem to remember that the lower pan of the ban stand had colourful embellishments on it. The last time I walked around there the other day, there were no embellishments whatsoever on the lower pan.
I think it's an underpotion.
Have we been short-changed, or, again, the time estimate from North Somerset, has it failed miserably?
No, I think it's an underpotion.
It was, as I understand it, the decision was taken to do in a plain manner, and there was some debate about that, but the only issue that I confess, I'm not sure whether they have completed, which is outside their time schedule, because they've been waiting for an effecture, was the actual bollocks. And I don't know whether they were actually in, and I confess I didn't check before I came here tonight, but that was the only thing I think they were waiting for, the other was to order.
I just wanted to talk about the bollocks, actually, because here's the promise a year ago, to be put in place a year ago. They've become very dangerous this time, and I know that both the Civic Society and a number of other organisations have been highlighting this issue across the whole year, so it will be very encouraging if they actually turn up.
Yes, I think it would be something, if it's not done by the time of next TA meeting, I think we need to put on the agenda to see what problem it is, because I think, I answered the last bit to Gareth, that they have arrived, and I think we did ask him directly whether there was a budget for what, and he said, "Well, we had lots of other priorities." If we were to get some indication of what the cost of installation is, it might be that those three organisations that have been involved in the renovation would be prepared to chip in, raise the priority up the list for North Somerset, so we will take that forward now.
Could I just come back, just very briefly, in that there was budget for those bollocks a year ago?
Yes, there's no dispute. Yes, there's no dispute over the bollocks. I'm not answering Paul or Somerset, but there is no dispute over the bollocks, I think they've had trouble getting the installation cost covered now. I'm just suggesting that we find out how much they are and just get on with it, basically, but we'll need to go through the usual machinations and theories.
Just about the ban stand, the question was asked to Gareth at the last team meeting about the decoration, and he actually said, "It is going to remain plain." I don't know what the logic is, but that's what he actually said. It isn't actually plain, it's two shades of green.
Does that mean that the decision not to encourage those plans was taken at North Somerset without any reference to us?
Probably.
Actually, I do remember, I mean, it was Gareth said that when they painted, they masked it with some tape, and when they pulled the tape back, there was some green paint underneath it, and he said, is that right, is that what he said? And he put it to the committee, he said, "Shall we keep that tape, to keep that green, or shall we paint it?" And we said, "We will do what you think's best, Gareth."
I was just going to highlight that point, but basically, that was exactly what he said, and I think, I think basically, it was like, "Well, it'll be white there." Green, sorry. Green. Not green.
Under item TEA 386, the Town Events Committee minutes showed that extensive discussion had taken place about the Clevedon Pride's use of the town council's electricity meter to power the Christmas lights in previous years, and also the group's decision to no longer finance the Christmas lights in Clevedon. No discussion as such took place on this matter at this council meeting, but one councillor did raise the matter.
Item 387, I take it that the investigative committee will due course report to the Chief Committee over the social service, and then those findings will be reported to council for the council to make the decision on what happens in this matter.
Yes, this is all, thank you.
Item 387, which is a report from the Town Council representative on outside bodies, which I know a couple of days, I was talking about the stroke leisure centre. We had a very selective meeting, myself, councillor Blaze, councillor Sizy, and councillor Hatch. Was it way back on 9th of September? Yes, it was, we had a little tour of the changing rooms that were currently being refurbished, and they look very promising, and it's all very positive. I understand those changing rooms were opened on something like the 4th of October, a couple of weeks ago. I must admit, I'm very disappointed, I've had lots of negative feedback about the way those changing rooms are functioning. People are saying the showers break, they've improved amazingly, in fact, people spend a lot of time in the showers now, which must be costing them a fortune in terms of water and stuff like that, but unfortunately, one of the most fundamental things has been overlooked, and that's the safety floor. Apparently, floors are completely flooded, basically, they're not draining properly. Now, I'm not a plumber, I'm not a builder or an architect or anything, but I'm quite disappointed with one of the most fundamental things that the swimming pool changing room is, the floors are currently wet and are causing a lot of hassle in terms of people getting wet, they're getting muddy, muddy water sloshing around the place. I just think, I'm just very disappointed that North Somerset put the attention on handling this version in the way I would personally have done it.
Well, I think we'll take that up through the report back, and then it can perhaps be brought back onto the agenda. I mean, I think it has been a concern for a number of us, that there are lots of shops that seem to start with good intentions, but aren't affected by budget directly, but where the principle is, is management of them, and I think it's likely another example of that. So, we'll certainly put that on, and if there is always the option, I would just remind members, as we've got quite a lot of extensible bodies on the surface, if you want to bring it forward to the formal agenda item rather than just a report, happy to do that, Chair.
I think it's fair to say, as a result of the original meeting, which was between us, I'm still in communication with Mr McKee, the leisure centre manager, to try and arrange another meeting with the users of the centre now.
Should we go to chat?
Yeah, which now the changing rooms are open, well, hopefully, address any problems which are coming around. And I have heard the same stories, unfortunately, which is very sad to hear, if you spend a lot of money on them, but unfortunately, I don't know if it's an accident, but I did give them about two weeks. I did give him about two weeks a week ago to come back to me and start arranging dates, names, groups, all the points, so we can sit down and discuss any other problems I know.
In my capital privilege, the minutes of the last party meeting held on the 8th of October, there is one part, one item, and this puts us really in a position for a very famous singing group now, Athenea and Frederick, who for those who are old enough to understand these things, will remember they had a very famous song called 'There's a Hole in My Bucket'. Well, this is to do with a hole in our wall against the river bank. You will see that we have examined the tenders and we are recommending a tender to the council to get this work done. It is rather important if the river rises officially, that could damage the water there. So, the chairman, I ask the council to confirm and to willingly pay the tender or ask.
Sorry. Whilst I'm not terribly, you know, I highly support of the perhaps, you know, accepting this proposal, I just think if people have a leaky bucket, you end up throwing it away in the end, and you don't keep on plastering it over with, you know, Band-Aids and things like that. I just think perhaps there's a time when we can actually review this building, decide whether it's actually worth the council having it to.
Ma'am, respectfully, I'm not arguing with you, but that isn't the point now. The point is, instead of using the last surplus, we helped you use Scotch tape and put it, rebuilt this wall in a proper fashion.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, chairman. Well, unusually, we had a part one item here. This was for replacing the water pipe on Victoria Road allotments. We had no option but to do it. If we didn't do it, then Bristol Water would have done it at great cost. We had a time scale in which it had to be done. We had great difficulty in finding contractors to do the work. We had a number of tenders in at the end. The highest was around £7,000, so we chose the lowest one, which I think in the end was about £2,000, about £2,900, I think. So we had to go and then do it. It is all done now and it will be, hopefully, good for another 50, 60, 100 years, who knows? Anyway, I need your approval for that.
Your approval.
Thank you.
In the minutes of the allotment committee meeting, reference was made to the work undertaken by the conservation group Friends of Poets Walk in Hacks Way, down in the west end of the town. This raised a query from one of the councillors.
Can I just ask a quick clarification? Hacks Way, of 439, we work, and then it says Hacks Path, and where is it?
It's between Old Church Road and going up to the hill behind church, behind the church hill allotments.
Right, okay. So is that Hacks Way or Hacks Path?
Whichever you go.
Yes.
Whatever I say.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Go on.
Thank you, chairman. I'm a little concerned generally with the minutes of allotment committee meetings. And it's not restricted to, the point isn't restricted to allotment committees, in case anyone should think that. These reports seem to be getting more and more detailed with trivia. And if we take the allotment committee as an example, and I emphasise that, we're talking about £120 here for the water leak and people are not keeping their pants tied in with some rubbish. And there's a pothole. And things like that, borders again, and repairing a boundary fence, these should be dealt with, hand workers and routine, daily occupation and duty, and only the important ones reported to council. And I'm very surprised, going back to the part one item, which is to receive and agree the prices for the replacement of the pipe work, we have no prices. How can we agree the prices? We don't know what they are.
I did state that it is about £2,900 per week. This, this work was mandatory, had to be done.
Yes, I said that, of course.
Other than money, yes.
It's, this is the part one item, it's the only part one item amongst all the trivia, and it's the only one that would appear to read detail.
To have the amount on it.
There's nothing there at all. So I don't know whether to agree the prices.
Well, it has to be agreed now. I mean, we had to do it, we have no choice.
That's not the point, that's not the point. What are the allotments for?
I did explain that we have some difficulty in finding contractors to do it.
Yes, I accept that.
We, we were in a catch, a catch 22 situation unfortunately.
And to illustrate my point further, in case anyone thinks I'm attacking the allotment operation, this environment and property also has gone into the unnecessary detail of the week. Move on, Mr. Chair.
Worship, worship. I do link it, I do link it to the allotment committee due before. Well, there you go.
Deviation?
Repetition, strategy.
Can we get back to the point? The point is, do we, do we need to know that someone needs an additional coat of paint?
Yes.
How did it get done by the caretaker and we paid for the tip?
I'd just like to add to the allotments query. As far as the allotments are concerned, these matters are important because they always have a mandatory or a legal aspect at the end of the day. If allotment gardens are not maintained, then we have to go through the, the normal procedure of giving warnings and perhaps determination. This is important to the people who are on the waiting list to have an allotment at the end of the day.
A quick one, if I may.
Of course.
I'm not challenging nearly everything the council have made yourself, but do we need to know the detail? Why can't we entrust it to others to get it done, to maintain the board's understanding, which we quite rightly point out? Do we need to know? Perhaps I'm overemphasising before, because the district councillors spend a lot of time listening to heartrending tales of how to save 20 million, 2 million, 100 million over five years, on and on and on. And yet we are, I won't use the word, that got me into trouble last time.
Winter, wasn't it?
Go on. I am back on the point, I was dealing with an interruption at the council.
That's the thing.
Yes. I will sit down.
I resent the listing of the allotments, Mr. Speaker. This is for year in, year out. I notice that when you're a new councillor, it was an ill allotment because it isn't important, it's some sort of silly thing to do with plants. It's actually probably the best committee in the council.
Indeed.
It deals with real people who are concerned about falling down off the paths, if the paths are not to be silted, who are concerned about batteries and holes and carrots being eaten and all the rest of it. That is important. And in fact, if you look at this, it's not actually a very normal minute. We're taking, as we said, longer to talk about it than the minute itself. It is, it is important. Can I just say, I resent the listing.
May I respond to that, chairman? Is it clear? Well, I think it should be of equal yet to the comments. Councillor Norton and I have disagreed on many occasions and her being a retired English teacher is relevant to it. And I object to the comments which I thought were ill founded. And I thought that I had very cleverly and clearly made the point that I was not commenting on the allotments per se, but on several committee reports. I know I have a certain reputation in some people's minds and I am working very hard to correct that, clearly with utmost success in some directions.
Could I just make a comment about this, just very briefly? I understand councillor Garner's concerns, but I think this should be something that's to look at within the, within the, I suppose, FGP, about standing orders and how, how minutes are put together. I think that would all go together generally. If, if that's something which is our great concern, I think that's where it should go, not with individual committees.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, that some of the articles have been told, but when you're talking about footpaths, holes and these things, these are health and safety items. And people can get hurt and if they do get hurt, if you happen to dress them, we might get in trouble.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'm not fit in the allotment committee because you wouldn't have any allotments if some of us hadn't thought of it 20 odd years ago. But let's get it straight. I agree with councillor Garner to quote it. And I think all we want to know on this council rate is that a certain number of letters of concern were sent out in total. A certain number of allotments have been left. We don't want to know the exact number, that doesn't concern the council. We want a summary of what was happening and it could be condensed a little bit. We would still have the letters of concern were sent out, we still have the allotments that were left, but they could be summarised a little bit better and it would be more concise, that's the only observation I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, chairman, I just want to say that from the perspective of it, you might be about to join us, I think it might be worth saying that sometimes we discuss on a really poor basis.
You don't ever raise anything. Thank you very much. And I'm just, I'd like to say that as a councillor, who's only, I think, attended one or two allotment committee meetings in the last four years, I find these minutes truly useful because it tells me what's going on. And this is what we're here for, to know what is going on in our town. So, chairman of the allotment committee, allotment committee members, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I think it is important to know the detail because it gives us a historical view and record so that we can follow up any issues that are not completed. So I think that's it there. If there are no more further questions. Thank you, thank you, chairman.
I find that you know what we're voting for. You weren't to be wrong.
The resignation of councillor Alan Cotton from the Walton Ward created a vacancy in the council. Three people applied for the post and they were invited to present their credentials at the end of this meeting.
Is that you've sat through quite some time of counselling and seatwork, if you all still want to be involved? Be very pleased to see it from you. Okay, so I have to stand, say a word. Me, Mr. Chairman? May I say first of all, I'm not entirely sure that I want to join you. But having said that, here goes. I'm very grateful first of all for the opportunity to add to my expression of interest, which hopefully councillors have received and read. Problem is, 200 words on paper and 300 words spoken do very little to identify the person who was written or spoken. So the question I want to ask and hopefully answer is this, what is it that makes David Edelston tick? And what makes me who I am? And I think those are two very important points which I hope to address. So the first thing I want to say is, in a sense, to nail my colours to the mast, which tells you basically who I am. If members have that my expression of interest, they will have noticed my keen interest in my involvement with Christchurch. My involvement is much more than involvement with the church. It is important to me, my faith is vital and my faith influences everything I do. And so that's my starting point. Now, this does not mean that I am sanctimonious, self-righteous, do gooder, because I'm not. Those people who know me are fully aware that I have an extremely warped sense of humour and that will come out, should I eventually find my way into this kingdom. Since arriving in Cleveland 40 years, nearly 40 years ago, I have been involved with a number of organisations which are Cleveland based. Members will have noticed that I enjoy singing, I'm not going to bore you with the edition of the Australian chorus. But I have been member of the Cleveland Choir Society for, ever since it was re-founded over 30 years ago, or 30 years ago. I was also one of the very early volunteer drivers with Cleveland Care. Children's Hospice South West is an organisation which is very dear to my heart. I was able with others to establish the Cleveland Support Group and served as chairman for 10 years. Recently, I have taken up the post of clerk to the William and Woodford Trust and at the moment, I'm also involved in Cleveland Speed Watch. So be careful with your speeding. With all this in mind, what am I able to offer? If co-opted, I will be the new boy on the block with very little experience of council business. But I can say this, I have a willingness to learn, which I think is important, and also a commitment to the council, to Cleveland town and its residents. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everybody. It was interesting to listen to your debate this evening. Thank you for inviting me to introduce myself and make this short presentation of why I'm keen to become the town councillor. I would like to use the next three minutes to expand on some of the points highlighted in my expression of interest. I've lived in the Gurdian Valley for nearly 30 years. For 22 years, I was a consultant surgeon at South Main Hospital. And for 10 years, 10 of these years, I was a medical officer in the Royal Reserve. I'm keen to represent the interests of the electorate of Walton Ward, in particular in Cleveland in general, to the best of my ability. I've lived within the ward and therefore feel that I can readily represent the views of the residents and make, and have a good understanding of their concern. It also makes it easier for residents to make contact, as was the case when I was the councillor in Clutton where they were. Colleague feedback indicates that I am hardworking, enthusiastic, reliable, dependable, honest and supportive. I'm told that I have the ability to see the alternative point of view without clouding my judgment. During discussions, I feel confident of my ability to quickly identify the serious problems. I am accustomed to writing concisely books. I have extensive experience of team working and leadership. I have always worked with an organisation with financial constraints and have no point having to prioritise on me, so I'm no stranger to these challenges. In the last two years, I've become a member of my local GP Patient Participation Group and facilitated changes that improve disabled patient access. My knowledge of the NHS enables me to give advice to those who are getting put attention of beds at Cleveland Hospital. I have an interest in medical education and I've been closely involved in the selection of medical students for the University of Bristol. This not only involves selecting tomorrow's doctors, but widening participation into medicine from underrepresented groups. Bristol City Council is the only local authority in this area still running an added learning service which is open to Cleveland residents. Recently, this has been under threat. I remember a small group who have been negotiating with councillors. I'm a member of a small group who have been negotiating with councillors and officers to save the service. These meetings are ongoing. Today, we have managed to save the service and get it on a more secure financial footing due to good cooperation with the newly appointed managing team. I thoroughly enjoyed my time as a parish councillor in Clapham Gurdain. I felt the position was both rewarding and an opportunity to give something back to the community in which I lived in for some, quite some time. Despite the frustrations of the planning process, which often produce a result at odds that parish councils feel. My wife and I enjoy travelling, gardening, walking to Scotland and current affairs. In conclusion, I feel very well placed to represent the residents of Walton Ward and would feel privileged to be given the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Good evening to you, thank you for inviting me to come on this evening. I've lived in Cleveland for nearly fifty years. Although I've not participated in anything to sit on the council, I have participated in many of the leisure from past times that there are. I'm currently a member of Rotary, Rotary YO, I'm also a lion, sorry, a member of the Lions Club, not a lion to roar at you. I enjoy what I do. My lifetime work, if you like, has been in the cleaning industry and that goes from the cleaning octave all the way up to scale. So I'm used to dealing with a large number of people, a large number of complaints, but also a large lot of people saying how pleasing I am, that I've managed to come and see them. I've sat on various committees, I've not sat, as I said, on any of the council meetings, but I have sat on various committee meetings to do with the cleaning industry. In nineteen eighty-eight, my husband and I moved to one oh five Old Park Road. Sadly, he died in October twenty twelve and I moved out of the bungalow in October twenty thirteen and I currently live at the Hawthorns. So I have been watching what's been going on at the ban stand. I feel that I'm a sympathetic listener, I'm a team player, but also like all of us, have our own views on what is going on in Cleveland because that is what is so important to the residents. I was at Sun Hill Park, the community centre on Sunday, and I have to say to you what a very sad place it is. I know that you've got constraints on your purse, but I would like to think that somewhere along the line, they could be helped with their financing and their redecoration. The other one that I did think about was, in fact, next year, we've got another episodes of Broadchurch, which will once again put Cleveland on the national television. And I wonder whether there is any food for thought with the council of actually prioritising something to help all the community in Cleveland. Of that, I would like to be involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The councillors were each given two slips of paper, one to record their preference vote and the other to note their second place vote should the first count result in a tie. The winner was announced by the town clerk.
The winning candidate is Chief West.